This is Jason Anderson and I am calling the special town council meeting to order for budget deliberations for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Grandelski, who was absent with notification, and Ms. George, who is joining us remotely. At this time, we'll move on to item two, public comment on our proposed fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. Ms. Clorio, could you go over any comments we had submitted, please?
We received three public comments submitted via email. The first public comment is from Yanni Barclay at 6480 County Road, 19S, Minota, North Dakota. And the public comment was written in support of the high school Latin program. The next one is from Jamie Carver, 140 Centon Road, Brooklyn, wrote a public comment in support of the high school Latin program. The last one is Alexis Costa, 220 Gleason Circle, East Rochester, New York, and public comment was submitted in support of the Latin program at the high school. Those were the three, only three public comments we received via email.
Thank you. At this time, we are open for public comment. Anyone that would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
So for those that are listening, the door to the town hall is open and the town hall is open and available if anyone wishes to come into the building.
Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item three, budget deliberation, three, a consideration in action on a resolution setting the Town of Killenley operating budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Motion has been made by, well, Ms. Wayne Field, second by Ms. Barclay. Discussion. I will open the floor to anyone who wants to make comments, adjustments to this budget.
If you can just excuse me for one moment, I want to make sure that I have the blank, the blank set out for you within that resolution so you can make sure that we're filling them in appropriately. So I'll just, I just got to run down the hall. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'll start, I'll start this ball, this ball rolling. I've been through the line-by-line item that was requested from the superintendent. It's kind of sad that he's not here because I actually had some questions for him. And I went through it not once, but twice. And I'm, I know there's more stuff that I missed, but there's a whole lot of redundancy. There's way too much use of other objects to cover food items, which, you know, the taxpayers, you know, considering we have a large number of students that are already on free and reduced lunches, why should the rest of the tax town have to be paying taxes to feed? I mean, it just didn't make any sense. And as a former Killenley High graduate, and I spent my, a large amount of time in the Business Center, we paid students to create all of the programs for the band, for the concerts, for the graduations, any ceremonies. That's an employable skill. And there is already a line item in their budget for paying for the tech student to learn how to run the TV station? Then why is there tens of thousands of dollars throughout the district being spent on producing these programs and certificates? And there, there was a $90 line item for business cards. And I'm like, who needs a business card if you're a teacher? I mean, I haven't met too many teachers passing out business cards. The amount of money spent on travel, there's a line item that pays the bus drivers already. And there was over $100,000 to transport our middle school and high school students. And, you know, there's a reason why they turn back millions of dollars every year. And I actually had a conversation with my sister a couple of weeks ago, who's up in Thompson. They have a zero return. They spend their budget. Last year, Winnie reported Putnam turned back 30,000. And we're already looking at over a million dollars coming back this year, and they want another 1.7. You know, and when I heard somebody say that, and I know it's hearsay, and that's not, won't stand up in court, that their Board of Ed members didn't even look through the line-by-line, I'm going through it again because the redundancy is ridiculous. I mean, stop trying to spread it out and hide it. I understand for budget purposes, you need each school, and we've asked for them to break it down into schools because they used to have it all, but trying to track it all under all the names that they put it under, and some of the stuff that was zeroed out actually goes and benefits the students, like band equipment, making sure athletics, there was actually, the description on it was to make for safe athletic events. They eliminated that. They eliminated a program for reading, and it came out on last Thursday that we're at, our literacy rate is, what, 55%? I mean, it's, it's just frustrating. They're, they're hurting our, they're potentially hurting our credit rating with the credit bureau because they keep turning back so much money. And frank and honest with you, they're not spending the money the way they should be spending it. And I know I have no say on it, and that, and yet they can come in line-by-line item me on the town side, and you can't even, and as far as the last time I heard, you could, their budget's not even up on their, on their website. And I hate to do it, but I, there's no way, God's green earth, I'm giving them another 1.7 million dollars. I will not support that. It's not fair to the kids, and it's not for the teachers or the paras, because ultimately what they're spending stuff on is not people, and I have no problem spending money on people.
Thank you.
I also went through line-by-line, and I did have a few questions for the superintendent. One of the line items was, there's several field trips. This was on page seven. The field trips, 21, 22, actual expenditures was 2,779. For 22, 23, that budget was increased to 7,050. For 23, 24, they want to increase it to 7,500. That's a huge increase. Promotional T-shirts, one was 1,200. On another page, there was more promotional T-shirts. Then there's the other objects again, as Tammy brought up. 21, 22, actual expenditure, 1,373. For 23, 24, they want to bring it up to 2,000. KH Athletics for 21, 22, actual expenditure was 49,171. For 22, 23, they increased it to 70,000. For 23, 24, they're, they want to increase it to 80,000. That's more than a 60% increase. And it just goes on and on. A field trip to the YMCA, a trip for tubing, there was one for World Languages for KISS. If they're, and I had a question, if they're eliminating the Spanish program, why is World Languages still have a line item of $2,076? KISS, $750 for socks. The kids can't buy their own socks for their sports. The budget for their sports for 21, 22, $57,421. Last year, $15,639. Now for 23, 24, they want to increase to $35,529. It's for sports equipment. What, we can't use basketballs and soccer balls over? We have to keep purchasing new ones? It's just on and on. Another one Tammy was talking about, printing and binding. 21, 22, it was $185. Then they increased it to 100, 1,500. All of these things are not educational, and there's no explanation of why the cost has gone up so much. And that's not even going, going through half of the book.
Thank you. I will say that I had asked the town manager to reach out to the Board of Ed and Superintendent so they could be here to answer questions tonight. Unfortunately, they declined to attend this meeting, which, which I think is very unfortunate because last year, the superintendent expressed that he, when the questions were asked at the public hearing regarding the Board of Education budget, he said he wasn't prepared to field any questions at that time. And I was hoping that by us not fielding questions at that point and having this and inviting him, he, it would give him an opportunity to clarify a lot of the questions we have. And it's, it's really unfortunate that they declined to attend.
I, I did have a comment from a few people in my district. One of them was, how can we decide on the BOE budget when it's not even on the website and we can't even look at it? And another question was, and this was brought up last year in regards to the foreign exchange students at the high school, is that stipend being paid? Do we have foreign exchange students?
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Patty.
So, can you guys hear me okay? Okay. So I also went through each page of this 147 detail that Mr. Angelie gave us. And I, as Tammy and Ula have both indicated, there's a lot of things on here that we would want more detail on, and not specifically for us, but for taxpayers. When you look at other objects, it's in the hundred thousands of dollars. That's not acceptable. And it's not to, you know, punish the kids or punish the teachers. We want to make sure they're getting a good education, but it's, the money being spent properly. Now, when you look at the non-lapsing fund, that was initially set up for special ed needs, unexpected, or like facilities problems. If like a heater blew or a boiler or something. Yeah, in this document, I can't find the page number right now. If I'm reading it correctly, there's $190,000 earmarked for special ed. Now, wouldn't that make more sense to use a non-lapsing fund correctly if that were to occur, if they needed that money, instead of putting a placeholder of almost $200,000 into our budget? I just think there's a lot of mismanagement of funds on the Board of Ed side, I'm just going to say it.
Thank you.
I too am disappointed they didn't want to come tonight.
Flipping over to the town side. The, and I apologize for not being here last Thursday. I don't get a choice when people call 911, so wish I had that choice. I get out on time every time, but it is what it is. So one thing I did hear, and this might be a little bit hearsay because I didn't have a chance to go back and listen to the meeting last Thursday, it wasn't, I guess, emphasized enough, so I'll emphasize it now. Part of the reasons on the town side for some of the increases are debt service. It's a massive increase there due to the KMS, the Westfield, and the high school as well.
It's really the KMS. We're getting ready to issue the first round of debt service that we had indicated when we, when those projects were approved, that the 2024 budget would be the first year for debt repayments. So we're looking at issuing our first round of debt for largely the KMS project, a little of that is the Westfield Avenue project as we've started on that project. And so the first debt service payment will be due, and that increase is about $400,000 due to those, which it's a .28 mil increase related to that debt service repayment.
And over the next three years, too.
Correct. Though, we won't start to see a drop off, you know, a more substantial drop off in debt service until about 2029, 2028, 2029, for the high school. That's when, because we issued the debt service for the high school in pieces over a number of years, and so that'll be really when those first debt service payments start to roll off. We'll be completely have the full high school debt issuances repaid in 31, yeah, 2031 will be the year that we have them fully repaid. So that will all come off the books at that point in time. So they'll, it'll, the debt service will start to decline in a few, in, you know, a few years from now, but initially, we had indicated that there would be an increase due to the onboarding of the additional debt.
Right. And, you know, that's one thing I did, did want to emphasize a little bit more is the, the reasoning, debt service is something we obviously, we don't, we can't not repay our debts, you know, that's. And one thing I will say is I've, I've been very happy that since I came on a few years ago, we've, we've really worked towards getting projects done that have been kicked down the road for the last 20-plus years. I mean, KMS alone, I think I was still a student in KMS when they were talking about renovating KMS. You know, and that was over 20 years, 20, 30 years ago, almost. So, you know, it's a, it's a good thing that we're doing these things. Unfortunately, none of us planned for a pandemic. None of us planned for inflation over the last two years to skyrocket, which I think is part of why we see on both sides of the budget, but BOE and town, some increases as well. I do think there is some savings, obviously, that we can still have, obvious, but, you know, one thing, obviously, we've, we've had a very mild winter. So our sand and gravel, where we're full to the brim and then some. I know the town manager mentioned that during the budget presentation for us. That's one area we can look at for savings. I'm not entirely in agreeance with the full $145,000 for KB. I think that's another area we can look at to reduce the proposed budget. So that's a couple of places that I'd, I'd like to see us start looking at.
Thank you. Now, I just have one question, Ms. Clorio. As far as NDDH, my understanding is that they, the board voted on their budget. How much of an impact does that have on this right here?
Sure. So in the present, the proposed budget that you have before you, it included a per capita rate of $1.75 based on the presentation made by the executive director at your March meeting. I have been informed by our, one of our board representatives, Dave Griffiths, did call me to confirm that the board did approve, and we actually got the, the formal notification from NDDH today, that they approved a budget at a per capita rate of a dollar. So it's a decrease of 75 cents per capita, which is a little over $13,000. That is, that would be a reduction saving. So I, I do have that noted, so that could be a reduction.
Any other comments?
Yes. Mary, what if, do you, obviously, this is my second year, but still very new with, with all this budget stuff. So do you put together anything that your recommendations that we can decrease the budget?
So I did speak with the chairman beginning of this week, I guess, maybe? I can't remember her, our exact date of our conversation.
Last week?
But he gave me, last week, he gave me some indications as to, you know, generally, I try and get an understanding of where collectively the council may be looking and how much the decrease is looking for. So I did prepare some scenarios of what might be on options for the council to consider. So I do have those three. I have printed copies of those. If you want me to review those with you. One that, you know, I did indicate within the budget presentation that because we've had a mild winter, we probably could back off of the budget for salt. We do have a full salt shed at this point in time. So that is an area of recommendation that you could safely, and I say safely, meaning that there's enough reserves and back and stockpile that I don't foresee us putting us into a, you know, a difficult position going into next winter, that that could be a reduction. I also indicated in my presentation that I had added 25,000 to the contingency budget line largely due to the inflated costs that we're seeing around those emergency repairs or those emergencies that crop up. That could be something that's removed. We haven't necessarily fully exhausted the 250,000 in a, but, in a budget year due to emergencies. That's not to say that we're not going to run into that next year, but we have had a number of emergent repairs that have occurred that have had to go to the contingency line. But that would be a recommend, recommended area. And then it would be a matter of where the, I, I'm not clear on where the council may land with KB ambulance's request. That is a very significant increase to the budget, where that, in, where the council, the council lands on that deliberation. And then I have the NDDHs. I do have a couple of other scenarios, because I was getting some indication from the council that, from the chairman, that the council wanted to see what it may look like for a more substantial cut. And I do have an outline of what some of those cuts are, which impacts recreation and library pretty significantly, and highway. So I do have those to review if, and I have copies of those if we want to review those scenarios that I've reviewed with the chair, with the chairman.
Thank you. So each of these scenarios represent a, based off the grand list, represent a different amount if the budget went throughout that, where the mill rate would fall. Because, just to remind everyone, we don't actually set the mill rate at this point. We set the budget. That goes to annual town meeting, that goes out to referendum vote, and then once the budget passes referendum vote, then the mill rate is based off of the grand list and what the budget is. But just to give our town manager an idea of roughly what we, where we were comfortable at, where some of us are comfortable at as far as mill rate increases. And one thing that was brought up by Mr. Wood was the fact that we have this debt service that we, we did know was coming. KMS is a project that, as Mr. Wood had referenced, the can got kicked down the road for so long, and it gets to a point where sometime you got to pick that can up. And that's, that's what we've had to do between condition of our roads, conditioning, conditions at KMS, and then our community center as well. So each of those, these scenarios, there's three different ones. One of them would represent a...
Do you want me to review it in detail, each of the three? I just handed out the first one to everyone, so...
All right. So the first one that was handed out represents, as you can see, it would represent a 0.88 increase in the mill. So if you would, Ms. Clorio, just go over what these cuts would be...
Right.
...to get us down to this point.
So the cuts that you're seeing before you is, the first one is the indication that I gave you in the budget presentation, which is a reduction of the salt, 25,000, and the reduction of salt. The next one is the ambulance service, and this was just kind of some guidance that the chairman had given me as to where he, you know, felt, so this was, the KB ambulance had requested an additional 145,000. This would remove 120,000 of that ask. So it does have some increase in, but not, not the majority of that. The reduction of the $13,000 that we know is an achievable reduction from the NDDH, because that just came in. And then again, that reduction of the 25,000 from contingency, that removes 183,306 dollars from the town's side of the budget. On the Board of Education side, the chairman had relayed to me that there was trying to maintain the funding for the armed security officers, and then, you know, potentially a bit above that. So I used the figure of 1.3 million. That would, that would leave a remaining increase to the Board of Education of $475,000, a little over that. So that would produce a mill rate of 26.02, which is an increase from the current year's mill rate of .88. And so that's the first scenario based on kind of some of that feedback that, again, that I had received from the chairman. Subsequently, I created a second scenario, which I'll have Jen pass out. The second scenario in that conversation with the chairman, with Jason, was if there was a way to further reduce the town side of the budget to more significantly get, get at or below a half of a mill increase with some additional cut to the Board of Education side. So I'll walk through this component. So this, in this mill rate, this scenario produces a mill rate of 25.67, which is a .53 mill rate increase. And this includes cutting the salt, but reducing that cut, increasing that cut from 25,000 to 50,000. It eliminates one full-time position in the highway department. It eliminates one full-time mechanic position in, out of the highway, out of the central garage. So we would reduce down to two mechanic positions that would maintain our fleet. That would likely result in, so let me back up, the reduction of the highway position that they would have to rework the plow routes. So you would be extending plow routes during the wintertime, and it breaks up some of our crews. We might need to look at, we would likely need to look at contracting out for some of our drainage projects that we currently do in-house. So that's kind of the impact with the highway department cut on that one position. The mechanics position cut, we currently have three positions. This would reduce one position, which currently is a vacant position. We are advertising for that position right now, but we are paused on advertising for that as we get through this budgetary process, pending outcome. But that, the reduction of that will result in the, more of the fleet having to go out to a contracted shop for some repairs because two mechanics aren't going to be able to manage all of those repairs in-house. So we'll be incurring higher contractual services costs. For recreational, on the seasonal staff side, it's a reduction of 33,000, and that will, that will eliminate one week of summer camp. So it'll drop from six weeks to five weeks. It'll eliminate one of the assistant camp directors. They're currently, we usually staff our camp with two because we have 120 campers plus all staff that goes with that, and to be able to have that backup. It would also include reducing wage rates for all of the remaining camp staff, back down to essentially minimum wage. It's going to reduce overtime for support for special events. So our full-time staff support many special events, and on an overtime basis that they would get paid for, we would, we would eliminate this, those, some of those special event supports. It would, so that's the 33,000. We would eliminate 13,500 out of contractual services for recreational programming, and that eliminates the senior morning yoga, and two Friday and one Tuesday morning movement class, and that is for our, like our toddlers, that's our little kids. The full summer concert series would be eliminated, and we would reduce advertising for all of these programs. The last piece under materials and supplies, it proposes a reduction in operating supplies for those eliminated programs, and it would eliminate the special event of Scarecrow Kingdom, and we would reduce athletic supplies. That's a overall a $50,000 cut out of the recreation programming budget. Library programming would also be reduced by overall of $45,760, and that is eliminating a full-time position and a part-time position. And with those eliminations, that will result in the closure of the library for Saturday hours. So we would eliminate Saturday hours of operation for the library. It will also shorten hours during the week because of scheduling and coverage. And it would also limit the use of the community room by groups because we have to have somebody there to open up the community room, and so we wouldn't have those later hours that we currently have. So that will scale back the availability of that room. Human services subsidy, again, this reflects a slightly higher reduction in the ambulance service line at $130,000 reduction, still, still leaving an increase of 15,000 in their request. The previous, the previous reduction with NDDH that we know we can take that reduction. The next section, employee benefits, is all of those benefits that are attached to the positions that I previously outlined for elimination. positions that I previously outlined for elimination and then reducing the special reserves by 25,000. That gives a total budget reduction to the town side of 400 little just under 472,000. I also reflected a board of education budget of 1.5 million. So that still leaves 275,000 as an addition to the current to the board of education budget. And again, that results in an increase in the mill rate of .53. But as you can see, that has a number of substantial program cuts to a lot of our a lot of our departments across the board. The next one that I'm going to review with you is scenario number three. I tried to do one that was kind of in the middle, if you will, or a in-between cut. So scenario number three, as you're receiving it, this one is an increase still in the mill rate of .73. So it results in a mill rate calculation of 25.87. And this captures the reductions from scenario number one. It does maintain the increase in the salt reduction in winter maintenance from 25 to 50,000. So this is reducing salt by 50,000. It does eliminate that one mechanic position in the one vacant mechanic position in the highway department. Again, that will likely result in fleet repairs having to be sent out for contractual services and that we would otherwise do in-house. The reduction to the ambulance service at 130,000, the known reduction that we can take for NDTH, the benefits associated with the mechanics position and the reduction in contingency of 25,000. That results in a reduction to the general government budget of 287,195. I've also reflected a cut. And again, this is in the middle, the first scenario had a cut to the board of education of 1.3. The second scenario gave you had a reduction of 1.5. This is a reduction of 1.4 million, right in the middle of those two. And again, that results in an increase of .73. So, you know, I'll run any other scenarios that the council might be wanting me to look at so I can articulate what those impacts would be to what those cuts might might be. But those were the scenarios that I reviewed.
I got a question. So this mechanics position that we're eliminating, how long have we been at two mechanics?
We've had we the since December, end of January, beginning of January. So it's only been a few months
Mm-hmm.
That we've been seeking to hire that third position, to rehire the third position. We've had a third position now for a number of years, probably better part of six years, seven years that we've had three mechanics positions. And we did have savings within our contractual services because we were able to take some of those things in-house that otherwise we were having to send out of house because we just don't have enough.
What is our what is our typical out-of-service or vendor or mechanic or a what is our typical outsourced?
So it depends on yeah, so it depends on the depends on the piece of equipment. It will depend on where it needs to go and what it what has to happen to it, right? So there is they have a number of contractors or vendors that are used, if you will, for contracting services, but it'll it depends on what the services that need to be provided and how quickly it needs to be done. Some can slate it right in and it depends on what their workload is. So we have several that we work with.
Do we have a typical amount that we typically send out to vendors?
No, we don't. We it we only send out based on our capacity to do it in-house. So if we have the capacity to do it in-house, we do it in-house. It's substantially more to we don't we don't have a limit. Now, I will say like a transmission rebuild, that's going out. An engine rebuild, that's going out of house, right? But the more routine maintenance, we all we've been managing all of that internally and none of that has had to go out of house.
During the past few months when you've been down at one mechanic, how many job how many times have you had to outsource stuff due to it being not having enough staff as opposed to a transmission or an engine rebuild?
Yeah, we haven't had to move a lot out at this point in time, just simply because it hasn't been we haven't had a sustained period of time and it's our slower period. It's it's winter season, so it's a slower period and we've had a very slow winter. We haven't had a very high impact on our fleet for the winter. As we move into spring and summer, that has a higher, we have a much higher uptick of vehicle maintenance that we have to we have to flow through. So we're gonna start to see more of that as we get into May and June and July. So I we haven't really had to send much out at this point in time, but in the long vision, I would see that we're gonna start to see more go out.
Now, during this three-month timeframe, I'm assuming we're pretty sure we've already been through the hiring process, have you had any applicant, any qualified applicants who have applied for the position?
Right. It's been it's been a struggle and no, we really haven't. We did have a qualified applicant at one point in time. We did go through, you know, an offer period, the person had accepted and then they used it as a bargaining chip where they were at and and remained where they were at, right? And that's something that we see across the board, not just in this position. That's not unique to this position. That's been we've experienced that in many of the positions that we've seen hiring. So you have to go through more than one round of hiring. That being said, at this point, I am not really advertising for hiring this position as this discussion is happening. Nobody's gonna put in for a position that they think is gonna cap caught on July 1st. So and I wouldn't put anybody through that. You know, this is people's lives. This is their livelihood and their household and I would never put somebody in a position of we'll hire you today, not knowing if you're gonna have a job on July 1. So we've paused that at this point in time. And I will say that our current mechanics, you know, they're getting through, but it's, you know, it's 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 strain and stressful at this point in time for them. So we'll manage as we need to. Once we have a clearer picture as to where this is, if we are going to maintain it in the budget, I will then restart the aggressive search for another mechanic. But at this point, I don't want to pursue that. No.
Thank you. I still have a few. Okay, good. Just being in the industry, I know right now it's extremely difficult to find mechanics and looking at the the salary we're at adds to the difficulty of getting someone in and and it is a burden for the other staff, unfortunately, and I feel it where I'm at. We've been short one, if not two, mechanics for the past two-plus years and it is very difficult to find mechanics right now. And I know I hear that from other industries as well. And at the same time, it's do we keep the money in a budget for a position that who knows if we're even going to be able to fill period? So I will turn back to you, Mr. Wayne.
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. So it looks like it looks like we initially cut 331,000 out of our original budget because the other 140 was already taken out, potentially taken out, I should say. Well, one of them's definitely taken out. But it seems like all these cuts here in my mind are feel-good cuts.
Which scenario are you looking at? I'm not sure.
I'm looking at the last, the most severe's.
So scenario two?
Yes. So you already have you're we're already cutting out a KB, which was which was discussed earlier. And then we had the 13,000, so I'm figuring like 330,000. But my problem is it seems like this this cut here, all these cuts are all feel-good cuts. You camp director, stuff for the for the kids, stuff for the seniors, and I just don't believe that we wouldn't we wouldn't have somewhere else to cut, but let's we don't.
No, we really don't.
We don't. I mean, what about how many what are we at? What is it, two and a half million that we planned on for the roads?
So that's being funded through fund balance.
Yep.
So if you reduce that, then you're reducing your fund balance allocation. So there's no impact to mill rate.
Yep. Okay.
So is there how much can be taken out of fund balance to help?
Right. So honestly, my recommendation is that the town council does not activate fund balance for operations in this year. We're getting ready to go into our credit rating call for our debt service that we're getting ready to onboard. I've been through many credit rating calls with our credit rating agencies. One of the first things that they're gonna look at is how much we're activating a fund balance for operational purposes and their question is, is why aren't you planning better? You knew you were gonna have to bring on this debt. Why aren't you planning better instead of utilizing your fund balance? It's not sustainable. With the utilization of the fund balance of 2.7 million in the current year, I cannot articulate that that's a sustainable use of fund balance over the period of five years. Our fund balance will be depleted well beyond well below our fund balance guidelines and policy well within that time period. And so I suspect that we would get critiqued by our credit rating agency for activating fund balance for the use of operations in the current year. And that was one of the reasons why we purposefully did not utilize fund balance for operations last year was in preparation to be able to demonstrate to our credit rating agencies that we were planning appropriately within our budgetary process for the onboarding of that. So we would have two clear years of not utilizing fund balance. So that's why my recommendation, again, the council, you can decide to do what you want to do with that, but that's my recommendation because knowing that we're going into that credit rating call next month, that's going to be the concern.
Potentially, how much could that ding us?
So if they decide to downgrade us, right now we're a double A plus. They could downgrade us to either a double A plus with a negative outlook or they could remove us to just a straight double A. What does that do? That impacts our borrowing power. So it does two things. Number one, it increases our borrowing costs because we are gonna pay higher interest, just like if you're going for a loan for a car or a loan or a mortgage. If your credit rating, you know, your credit score is lower, you pay higher interest. Same same thing for us. So a double A plus.
Is that only on the new loans?
It is only on the new loans. It doesn't flow backwards. That being said, it would potentially impact our previous loans that are it would impact the ability for us to refinance those loans and it would impact so our our the second credit rating agency of mo so we use S and P, Standards and Poor's. Some of our debt is rated by Moody's, which is another credit rating agency. And I will say Moody's is Moody. They are far more critical and when they down they downgraded us, they were the first ones to downgrade us for the use of fun of fund balance and supplemental appropriations mid-year. And it took us three years to shake that. So and we switched to Standards and Poor's right after that. And Standards and Poor's took three years to finally agree that we could move upwards in that scale. So it impacts in the long term for that credit rating.
So I have a question. I know we I'm because I've looked at the town side as well as the board ad. I know in 2021, it looks like we spent 138 for salt and calcium. If we've got a full salt shed, do we need to only eliminate 50,000 out of that 232 or can we take out more?
So I did review that with our highway director. One of the challenges that we're now facing is the increased cost of salt. So it costs more than it did in 2021, 2020 for us to purchase salt. We do have the winter maintenance reserves, which are healthy. But his recommendation was 50,000. If the council decides to drop it lower than that, you can. It just aren't my concern and I think his concern as well. My concern is that you may drop it for this year, but you know, how sustainable is it to keep it at that low threshold year over year? Are you creating an artificial bubble for next year that you're gonna have to re-increase it in order to be able to sustain the next winter? That's really the concern. We felt comfortable at the 50,000. I felt that the reserve could sustain that over, you know, that lower funded threshold for a number of years before the town would potentially have to look at really re-increasing that. Did we lose everything? Is Facebook Live still going?
I can hear you guys.
Okay, good. All of our your all of our screens went blank and I got concerned that we were no longer streaming, so.
So you can see she
But we're not, we're good. So so that's why the recommendation of 50,000 as opposed to taking a more substantial cut. Again, council's purview on this, you can determine at what level, but that's that's the reasoning for the $50,000 recommendation.
I think I've been watching American Pickers too much because how about we split the difference at 75?
Just so everyone is aware, when I did have a conversation with Ms. Gloria, I had referenced a $100,000 cut. And that was when she told me that she was gonna talk to the highway department and see get some feedback from them. So that's.
I'll still pull the American Pickers. Let's split the difference at 75 because and honest with you, I'm not really super comfortable about giving almost give an almost half a million dollars to the board of ed when they're already scheduled to give us more than a million back, so.
Going back to the mechanic position at the town garage, do they also maintain the buses or is that a that's a?
No, the board of ed has their own separate mechanics. That being said, we do help out every once in a while. Both sides will help out, but we don't we don't manage the bus fleet.
So I wanted to voice also that I went through line by line on the school and I I did see some pork. I don't have my thing with me because I knew there was no one to ask questions to tonight. I saw like teacher, not teachers, like Tammy, I'm very comfortable with the teachers and the salaries, but I saw the T-shirts for $3,000 and the last page had the lunches for just in case the state or the federal changed their law, they they put in $7,000 for lunches in case that law passed. And then the copiers, I thought was a lot. I had questions on that. So that's how I feel about the school. I had written, Mary, and talked to some people here about, I would be curious about running a scenario with one of our officers cut. So we had eight in the budget last year, but we only hired seven. Is that correct?
So yes, currently we only have seven officers on-boarded. We were in the process of onboarding our eight and unfortunately he took a different position. So we were gonna be actively we're actively re-initiating that search for the eighth one.
So let me just finish, Mary, and then you can run through the stuff with me so people know my thinking. So basically, there was already a placeholder and we were gonna go to 10 and we were gonna cut one trooper because one trooper costs two constabularies. So last year, in terms of top call volume, we ran with a total of nine officers. So we would still be increasing one officer, still doing the cut of the state trooper that we wanted. So why do you think that we couldn't go total 10 instead of 11? Like what in the call volume shows me that? Because you're still cutting you you we would go nine constabularies and one state trooper. So you'd still get that savings and you'd still be increasing.
Yeah, you would you would increase the savings to the budget. So I did provide to you all a copy of the call volume sheets that I've been reporting to you all for the last several years. And I indicated kind of the number of officers, but really, I'm only gonna really speak to the the current year one because that really speaks to the number of officers that we currently have. So you'll notice that, you know, the call volume in gray is the total call volume for all of Killingly. That number is then broken down into the two previous colors before that gray column. The blue is kill is the our Killingly constables and our resident state troopers. Those are the calls that they handled and the cases that they handled. The orange bar is the remaining calls that are were handled by Connecticut State PD or the Troop D, right? So our sixth officer, we on-boarded during first quarter, really kind of towards the end of first quarter. And then we on-boarded our seventh officer in the second quarter. So both of those quarters were impacted. When when you onboard a new officer, you have to do a field training process, which reduces the call volume for the training officer as well. They have to do not just training for calls, they also have to do administrative training as well. So they're not taking as many calls. So that reduces the availability of officers for call volume. So that impacts those two quarters for what our officers could handle for call volume. By the third quarter, we had all seven officers at full functioning, which means they were all completed their FTO and they were all getting assigned cases and they were all taking calls. So if you look at third quarter, the calls, there was a little over 2,600 calls in Killingly. Our our seven officers and I will say we've largely had we and our resident troopers have handled had, we, and our resident troopers have handled almost half of those calls. And that's because we have the number of, we have seven officers on board. If we're able to onboard the, the remaining three in accordance with that long-term vision, and again, this is trying to maintain that long-term vision and maintain that long-term approach of, as we sunset a resident state trooper, we achieve, by, by sunsetting a resident state trooper and achieving those savings, you onboard two officers at the same time. To be able to mitigate having to then increase a future budget by adding another officer, to be able to get to that long-range vision, that long-term vision that we had many years ago of that 10 constables, one resident state trooper, which has been collectively part of the goals set by the council for, you know, each council session that we've been through. So what does it mean to add, right? So if we're able to add, you know, if we are approved to adding the remaining three, the impact, we're not going to necessarily see a big shift in next year because what we're proposing, what this budget proposes, is onboarding a lateral by September and onboarding one officer through the academy. So one officer has to go through the training academy and F, and then a longer protracted FTO process afterwards in order to be able to be on-boarded. And we're really going to be training an entry-level officer. And that one isn't slated to come on until January.
So that's two.
That's the two. So we already have in our budget, the eighth one, that we're actively, we're actively seeking that position right now. The two that are proposed in the upcoming budget, one is we're proposing as a lateral to come in in September. The other one, we're proposing to be a, an academy slot.
So basically, right now, we have a placeholder, though.
We have a vacant position.
Exactly.
It's not a placeholder. We have a vacant position that hasn't been filled that we are recruiting right now.
For other departments, we call that a placeholder. So that's why maybe I'm confused. All of those open positions at the school.
I don't, the Board of Ed uses a different terminology. I, I, there, it's a, it's an actively recruiting, we're actively recruiting the position.
The money's there, and the person's not there yet.
Right. We're actively recruiting the position. That's a vacancy in the position. But, so where I'm actively recruiting for the eighth officer right now. So I could get that person on-boarded by July 1, right? Maybe just after July 1. I have found with law enforcement, they definitely have cycles of retirement. So when the academy ran and their 20 years are out, that's, so June and July tend to be a hot time period of lateral transfers. So we could, we could onboard before July 1. I mean, we're actively recruiting right now. So that's currently an open vacant position that we're looking to onboard. The two that are currently proposed, that's what we're proposing, is a lateral and then that academy position. Those would eventually be taking more call volumes. And so what's the value around that, right? So our off, by Killingly's officers being the ones that are predominantly responding to those calls, our community is getting far more consistency in the, in that, in who's responding. There's a lot more continuity in managing the calls. So we have gotten, you know, complaints from residents that they've been calling Troop D, they talked to one officer or another officer that are state, state PDs, and there's not a lot of communication between those, those individuals. They've responded to a call and they move on. They may not even be in Killingly the next couple of weeks because they're, you know, positioned out in one of the other areas of Troop D, not in Killingly. By having it be a Killingly officer that responds, they have a great communication cycle within our office. So they're able to share within our employees, I'm working on a case with that one, too. Let's collaborate together. And we, we have created where community members that have, have had ongoing issues, they've had direct communication to an assigned officer to be able to manage some of those. That's not something we can achieve with Troop D. So it does provide a greater community policing opportunity and where they can, and they also, Killingly officers, our officers, get to know Killingly fully, inside and out. They know who to talk to, where to go. It, it allows them to complete investigations faster and to be, be able to get more thorough knowledge through that investigative process because they are fully knowledgeable about Killingly. Where when state, state PD is responding to one call and then somebody else responds somewhere else, there's missing components. So our, our officers have handled and continue to handle a lot more in-depth investigations, specifically to Killingly, because number one, they're, they're incredibly knowledgeable. They have an immense background in law enforcement. They're also, this group is a great opportunity for the town to really bring in a new individual to training because we have such great depth of knowledge within our own law enforcement division to be able to train an incoming individual. Troop D's current, we've, there's been a lot of changeover in Troop D's law enforcement in their, in their officers. There's been a lot of shift, a lot of moving around. They haven't really been staying in Troop D for a lot of period time. So your most senior person, you know, your most seasoned person in Troop D is, you know, may, may only have five years on the job. A lot of them have less than that. So...
Okay. So let me just make sure I understand this. All of the calls would be answered with the one less officer. But in other words, we could do it with 10. We could do it with nine constables and one trooper, but the service wouldn't be as good. That's what you're saying. It's really not as much about the extra money, but it is about the service and the communication or?
Yeah, I mean, that's the goal of the program.
Yeah.
Right? That's the ultimate goal of the program.
Well, but, but our goal also is to watch the money. So that's why I'm asking this question. And let me just move on to, nobody else might have an appetite for this. So I don't want to make you do all the work, you know, of that. Where are we? Does anybody else have an appetite for looking at this scenario?
I'd like to just post a couple of questions, things that came to mind.
I don't.
Going through this discussion. As far as the amount of constables we have in relation to whether we need to have a master sergeant or not.
Right.
Or a regular state trooper, or, or a state trooper, a resident trooper who isn't a master sergeant. Does the amount of constables we have have any relevance on whether we're required to have a master sergeant or not?
No.
Okay. Other question would, the questions I had were, due to the, looking at the call volume, of these calls, is there any in here that were calls where you had state police and our constables at? Of the calls of state police covered, were there any calls where an accident on 395, or we're not sending our constables up on 395? Are those reflected in any of this, or is, or is it all just lumped in?
Right. So my understanding is from the total calls that it does not include 395 because we do not respond to calls on 395 as constables, that is state PD. So those are not considered as part of these calls. And so it's Killingly specific. I will say that, you know, the initial call may have multiple respondents. So it may be Killingly constable and a state trooper, but the call, the responsible party or the responsible reporting agent on the call is a Killingly police officer. So that's who gets the call identification because they have to do all the follow-through. So they're the ones that are writing the reports, following it through any court process, maintaining and gathering any evidence, doing any investigatory processes with it. That's the call volume that, that you see there. So we did try and have them remove out the extraneous call volume that would not be applicable to our, our agency.
And then something like major crimes division with the state police, if we're dropping down to just one resident state trooper, are those calls, those type of calls, we would still be required to, ones that normally major crime comes in, state police would still be coming in?
Yes.
Even if we're one, one resident state trooper?
Correct. Because we're still under a resident state trooper contract.
Okay.
Which means at a cer, at whatever, at the deemed threshold of severity of the crime, major crimes automatically gets deployed by state PD. And that doesn't matter if we have two or one resident state trooper. It is by their threshold. So that would still be deployed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Wood?
So I will say that, you know, I personally obviously deal with the, the PD on a fairly regular basis, whether it's state police, or I've dealt with our Killingly constables as well. Obviously, I don't think any of us here are questioning their professionalism or their ability to do their job because we, we know they do a phenomenal job. The, one thing I will say about this, though, is that Troop D is grossly understaffed, understaffed, and that is thanks to a myriad of factors, be, well beyond our control as, as a town, or any of the towns for that matter. You know, last week alone, I, I had to sit there and wait about 15, 20 minutes for the state police to show up for a violent patient. That's, that's 15, 20 minutes that, you know, that it, it, it can really lead to a lot of different things. And, you know, if we can free up, and the troopers, they, they apologize to us. It's, it's not their fault because, again, there's only so many troopers on. I think right now Troop D has less than 20 troopers available. And so they, they apologized to us. They said, we're coming from Canterbury, and here we are in Brooklyn. That's not their fault. And so having more constables actually frees up the, the state police to go to, to towns that still utilize the state police. I mean, I honestly foresee within the next 15, 20 years, other towns having to go to their own PD for this very reason of, if the numbers don't start increasing with state PD, they're going to have to do it themselves there to make sure that their citizens are safe. Whether it's, you know, 10 constables or, you know, two constables or whatever it takes just to get, make sure they have enough people to, to do that. That's why I will not support any scenario that eliminates any of the constables at all.
Jason, so, so I'm looking at these rough numbers. So even if I rounded them down, which they're above 2,500 a quarter, you're looking at, if you do a rough estimate at 10,000 calls, which is about, well, it's probably closer to 12. But if you round 10, because I like round numbers, and you divide it by 365, you're talking about almost 30 calls a day. That's, that's more than a call an hour. And that's, that's a lot.
I wouldn't support anything that would reduce the constables. I, I have, how do you say? I was fortunate enough to be talking with one of them, and I was able to be offered a ride-along. And I spent five or six hours on a ride-along. He even came in on his day off to, to take me around. And the areas that they know of where there are issues and where there are no issues, but the experience, that's just several years ago, too. Now he, that information's shared among all of them so that they know where the hotspots are and where, and where to look. And some of the stuff is confidential, so he couldn't share everything with me, but the stuff, these are, these are places you drive by every day. You never know that this stuff is going on there. And it's just, it's an eye-opening experience.
The other, the other thing, too, that goes along with that, Kevin, is EMS knows. You know, nobody, nobody realizes how many encampments there are out in the woods. And those get called, EMS gets called to those all the time. And we drive by those woods, and you have no idea there's all sorts of people out there. And that's, it is what it is. It's where we live. But EMS knows, the police know where they are, and the rest of us go on in our happy little life with rainbows and unicorns, so.
And I might add, too. I know I mentioned 20 troopers. Troop D, they're supposed to have 70. So we are at a deficit of 50 state troopers right now, just in Troop D alone. And Troop D is the busiest troop out of the state of Connecticut. So anything we can do to help, this helps them, too.
Which is why our officers tend, you know, typically in a resident state trooper town, sexual assault cases, certain violent crimes would automatically go to a state PD. Our officers handle a lot of those. And that is, you know, number one, a testament to their experience. And that's why we have really tried to look at bringing on lateral officers in hiring lateral. And that's why the proposal for the upcoming year is at least one lateral, to be able to have more of a individual that can hit boots-on-the-ground running and doesn't have to, you know, really learn all that police work. But we recognize that we do need to start looking at that longevity as well, which means investing in somebody into the academy and then training them up through. And having the knowledge base that we have is a phenomenal training ground for any new potential candidate into the police force. But they do handle a lot more higher-level investigation that may in other places that have resident state trooper contracts be passed on to state PD, which means you can count the calls, but you're not counting the hours of investigation that they're also doing, right? They are doing a lot of investigation. And there are times when, you know, they just come in to get it done, right? But they do a lot of investigation that go behind these numbers as well. So they're, they're, they are a very busy department. And by adding those additional positions will help, number one, kind of alleviate some of that hard-pressed pressure of caseload, but also be able to take on more caseload and keep our, the Killingly community, the Killingly officers being the ones to be able to respond in a quicker fashion, where state PD may not be able to respond because they are up in Pomfret or Thompson or somewhere else, and they have to drive all the way from there to here. If we have an available officer, it's, it's a lot faster for them to get there.
Thank you. So what, our last year's budget, what, what do we have in the budget for a constabulary?
I'm just pulling out.
I'm just looking, not from money-wise, I'm talking number-wise. How many, how many did we budget for last?
We budgeted for eight.
For eight. And we have seven?
We have seven currently, and I'm in the process of recruiting for an eighth.
Do we have any potential candidates?
We have some applicant in. We are, you know, we just re-advertised recently because we were in the onboarding process of one that he removed his candidacy not too long ago. So we just reactivated that posting. So we're in the process right now of accepting applications. We'll begin that review process in the next few weeks.
Because I could say personally, the, the constables do a, do a phenomenal job. As you said, for callbacks, I can, I can personally say they, they do a wonderful job. But my concern is, well, actually, let me just ask this question. So what is our budget surplus this year? Potential budget surplus?
I have it on there. We're estimating a budget surplus of just around about 150, 160,000 based on the budget document that I provided you.
So that's even with the, so you must not be taking into consideration that we don't have another constabulary onboard yet?
Yeah, no, that incorporates that.
That is that.
That includes all of that. We, we project the estimates, the 2023 estimates that we've put in your budget book. We base that on what we've actually expended to date and what we think we're going to expend for the remainder of the year. So that incorporates all of that.
So you don't figure on expending any, anything for that constabulary for the, from, for this year?
We probably will not expend that.
But did you estimate it?
We may have estimated it for the last month. No, I did not.
No. So that's zero for that, for that person?
Correct. I may have, I may have estimated one month.
Yeah. Okay.
But that's it.
Okay.
So basically, the 160, basically, almost half of us?
Yeah, a lot of that is winter maintenance.
Okay. But then the other half of it is basically that one position?
Yes.
See, I, I feel that, you know, we're elected by the people to watch the people's money. And I think you, as the town manager, is in a position same as us, you know, because you, you kept saying, it kind of bothered me when you said, well, it's the, you know, it's the town council's decision. It's, it's really not. It's, it's, it's all our decisions because we're all responsible for the town. So I would, and I, and I do feel uncomfortable about a lot of these feel-good cuts because I think they're feel-good cuts. And I, I think that, I think we should take another look at the budget and maybe come up with some, some different cuts that aren't going to, aren't going to hurt the townspeople as much, like the elderly. And, you know what I mean? I, I just, that's just how I feel. I just, that's just how I feel.
Having been through the budget process now, this is my fourth year doing this, I got to say, this is probably the tightest I've seen a budget. When we were going through the budget, literally, it was just nominal changes in most of the line items. The biggest change, obviously, is debt service. That's why I wanted to bring that up at the beginning of the meeting because, again, budget debt service is something we have no, we only have control over it by not ever doing a project. That's the only way we have that kind of control. But obviously, some of these projects need to get done. We can't keep kicking cans down the road forever. That's why, I got to say, I was really impressed on, there was very little I could even see personally to say, "We got to, we can cut back on this or that." This is really, in my fourth year, this is the tightest I've seen a budget be presented without gross impact. And obviously, too, the other big thing that we have to chronically keep in mind right now is the inflation rate has been, you know, hovering right now at six percent. But six percent is an average compared to what it really costs for materials, for food, for, and obviously, food's not really something we consider for the town. But I'm just saying, in general, all the different things there, some of the things are well above six percent inflation, some are hovering around twenty percent inflation. So it's something we have to consider as well, is that this is, much as I want a zero-mil, I don't think it's realistic, to be honest. This year and next year, I just don't see a realistic approach to a zero-mil increase. And I am all for not spending money and making sure we maintain. But at the same point, if we want certain, if the people want certain services, things like that, unfortunately, you know, taxes are a unfortunate, a necessary evil, if you will, in our society.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to that. So, yeah, six percent increase, but it's everybody, probably seventy-five percent of the townspeople aren't going to get that six percent raise, right? So they're, I'm not, I'm not, what's that?
The inflation rate, the sort of rates for their pay.
Right, but that's going to affect them, right? That's going to affect their pay. So if they're not getting a raise in their pay, they're not going to be able to pay that six percent inflation. They're not going to be able to pay the gas. They're not going to be able to, so I'm just saying, yeah, great, we have a tight budget, but, so we're saying there's nothing else that we can cut, there's nothing else that we can slim down, there's nothing else that we can, I just, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't agree with that.
And I don't agree with you.
That's okay. Um, I, go ahead.
Can I pop in?
Nope.
Uh, sure, Patty, jump in.
Oh, if you want to go first, Jason, go ahead.
No, Ula was about to say something.
Oh, Ula, go ahead.
So I agree with Andy's point. So we've had, one of the constabulary positions has been open for almost a year. So what are the chances that we're going to fill three of them? And so that is, you know, money that's going towards the budget, that could help decrease the mil rate because we only filled one position. So what are the chances of filling three?
So the current year, we filled two positions. We had had a position that vacated at the end of the previous fiscal year, and we recruited and onboarded two positions in the current year. And the, you know, we have one vacancy that we still have to fill. And next year, we're looking at putting, onboarding a lateral and onboarding an academy position. So that's a brand-new entry-level position. Our officers participated in a informational session that was held by the law enforcement council a couple Saturdays ago. There was about thirty attendance. There were a good number of them from this corner, you know, from the northern portions, Killingley, Plainfield, Putnam area that we're looking at going into the academy. So we have, you know, a list of perspectives that we could begin the process of evaluating to determine whether or not that's the investment that we're looking to make into going to the academy. So I agree, it is challenging to onboard laterals at this point in time, but we are not looking at all three being laterals. We were successfully able to recruit two laterals in this last fiscal year, relatively close in timeframe. And having an academy position, we're seeing a new, kind of a renewed desire or thought of moving into municipal law enforcement. And so I think we would be successful in getting a candidate to go to the academy. So I think that we would be successful in managing to fill those slots. And again, we would have had the eighth one onboarded. We did have a very qualified candidate that was very interested. It's unfortunate for us, fortunate for that individual, but they, they were currently in the military, and they were offered a different, longer-term position in the military, and they chose to stay with that. I can't fault a person for that. You know, everybody has that right to, you know, pursue in that direction. So we're back to re-going through that onboarding process. So we had paused. We weren't, it's not like we've been actively recruiting all this time without getting any qualified candidates. We had started the onboarding process with that candidate back in November. It takes a long time for onboarding on these. So, you know, we, I, we just started re-advertising for that position now. So there's a good chunk of the year that we were in an onboarding process and not trying to recruit for that position.
Thank you. Jason. I'm kind of like along with Ray. I think we, there has to be a certain amount of, you can't hold it zero forever. That's why we have all these projects that have been kicked down the highway. And that's why, that's why Putnam is where they are with all their building projects because they kicked it down forever and ever. They've actually rather smug over the years, saying, "Oh, look, we got a zero-mil increase. We got a zero-mil increase." Well, then their water pipes failed, their sewer pipes failed, they had to re, their town hall was falling apart. You know, you can't do that. I'm comfortable with a half a mil. I would be comfortable if we can get it to a half a mil. But I'm not comfortable with cutting our, the constabulary. That call volume is almost twelve thousand calls in a year. That's a lot of calls.
Patty, you still with us?
I sure am.
Go ahead.
So, so I just wanted to say a couple of things, and I don't want to offend anybody, but I'm going to be very direct, try to be professional. So I've heard a lot of comments, both to support potentially putting off, bringing on more constables, and then keeping on the, on the plan we already put in place. One, I'm absolutely a hundred percent not interested in considering any cuts or putting off more constables. Our job as town counselors, in my opinion, and I take my position like the rest of you pretty seriously, we are financial fiduciaries, but we also need to look at the well-being of our citizens, and we, we really need to make common sense decisions. And I'm just going to say it, the world's going crazy right now, and we have, we live in a state that supports, I'm just going to put it out there, feelings over facts. The criminals in this state are considered more important than the police officers who are defending our safety. It's, to me, it's a no-brainer that we do not take away any police officers. As Ray stated, and I know it's been pointed out, we're not taking anybody. But it's not a placeholder. We had a plan in place to onboard ten. The eighth one, thank you for your service, going back in the military. But as Mary stated, we're already in the process. There are applicants. I do strongly believe this position will be filled, and then we can go on to the next two. The officers we have now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but most of them have come from Troop D for their careers, if not all. They know the area. They know, as a few have mentioned, the hotspots. They know the troublemakers. They know the people they can talk to if they need information. They are part of the community. The key here is that Troop D, there's a lot of young academy graduates. They may not even be from the area. They don't know the area. It takes a while to get seasoned at your job. All of our constables already are. It's a no-brainer. Another thing I wanted to say is not to keep going back to the school, but when we talk about tight budgets, okay, I concur with Ray. Mary always puts together a tight budget for us. This year must have been harder than any because of the situation we're in across this country. The inflation is out of control. But she has managed to put together a budget with different scenarios that is actually, you know, people aren't always going to be happy, but it's manageable. We're not looking at a five-mil, six-mil increase where I bet some towns potentially will be because they don't plan as well as Mary does and her staff. I'm not taking away, I mean, this is a team effort, and I want to work as a team player. But if you go back and look, I'm just going to pull one thing because we've gone through that budget for the BOE. So field trips on, for athletics and wonderful sports teams. It's not about that. This is all about money, mismanaging. So the actual number for last year came in at four, year before, twenty-one, twenty-two, came in at forty-nine thousand dollars, actual number. The following year, they budgeted for seventy thousand dollars. Okay, so that's a thirty percent, you're off a little. Now this year, nope, didn't adjust down, say, "Okay, I understand inflation," but they do get the fuel break with the town, so they're at that locked-in price. Let's remember that. No, they jumped it fourteen more percent to eighty thousand. So you go from seventy, you had saved twenty-one the year before. We have increased inflation, but instead of maybe even staying flat, you throw ten thousand more dollars at it. I don't know who does their budget numbers. I really don't. But when we are micromanaging Mary's budget and the BOE and the superintendent will not even come in to answer our questions, I have a problem with that. I have no interest in cutting any employees whatsoever for the town side. And I don't see, with the money that gets turned back on the BOE, how they can even consider cutting actual employees and having a placeholder for almost two hundred thousand dollars for something that was created to be a situation like that. That's what the nonlapsing fund is created for, isn't even considered. And, and the most infuriating thing is considering cutting the Latin program that only costs, what'd he say, forty-four thousand dollars? Over all the other ridiculous stuff that they pay for, like two thousand dollars for a luncheon? I just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clorid, back to the public safety side of things, and talking about constabulary. Can you just go behind what the thought process was on the need for a police administrator at this time?
Sure, so that is really the, an administrative coordinator. So this is a person that can, you know, being within the office, can understand what all of our officers' workloads are and to provide that, you know, oversight as to overtime, caseloads, are they, you know, getting their reports done and submitted timely, that human resource aspect, if you will, with it. Also, to do the accreditation process that we're required to under state, under the state legislation. The town has to go through a, an accreditation process, and we have to complete that, the information in that accreditation process, which requires the development and uploading or just the uploading of all of the various policies and the aspects between the state's operating procedures manual, the town's operating process. So we have our site visit scheduled for that in July. That is taking a lot of additional time. This, that position also oversees the ASO, so a portion of that position is reimbursed by the Board of Education because it oversees the ASO, makes sure, are they reporting to work on time, are they performing in the way that they're supposed to? All of those components need to be managed by somebody that is within that office that also has the background and knowledge and understanding of a, of a police force. So our public safety administrator was a former lieutenant in the state PD. So he's very familiar with the administrative and the patrol side of law enforcement. So he's also overseeing, you know, procurement, our vehicles, making sure that our vehicles are getting through their standard maintenance, that training is, somebody's, he's the one responsible for tracking all of the required training and making sure that our officers are compliant with all required training. So that's, you know, there's other, he also oversees and manages the final review process and delegation of that final review process of all of our pistol permits. We have a large volume of that as well. So there's a number of administrative components, and what that does is, what was happening before was, our constables had to split up these duties. And as you can imagine, if somebody goes out for a week and something else has something, a piece of this, you know, procurement has to happen, somebody else picks it up, and now you have kind of a duplicate effort that's happening. And you're pulling a patrol officer off patrol and putting them on admin for, you know, extended periods of times at times. By having that administrator, he manages all of that and oversees to make sure that our officers are reporting timely, that they are not abusing any, which none of them are, but as we continue to develop and grow and you have more employees, you need to have that direct oversight and management. That's what this position is. He is not a sworn officer, so it's substantially less cost for the town as not having as a sworn officer. But he is well-qualified in understanding all of those administrative tasks and then also managing that accreditation process that is now required by the state.
Roughly, how many hours do our constables, of the work that this police administrator would be taking on, roughly how many hours a week are our current constables having to dedicate towards tasks that would be picked up by the police administrator?
We currently have a police administrator onboard. He's currently full-time. We transitioned him in the current year to a full-time position with the ASO's coming onboard and with the accreditation process. So we shifted from the, so yes, the current budget reflects a part-time position in the clerical. That cler, he was originally onboarded as clerical, and we moved him to administrator during the current year because of that accreditation process. And again, with the onboarding of the additional officers. So the accreditation process was, and the ASO component was really the largest component in moving that position to a full-time position. The request is to also maintain a lower, fewer-number-houred, part-time clerical that will continue to assist in that accreditation as we continue to onboard, and that administrators' duties are now split between ASO and constabulary as we continue to round out that ASO program. But again, the hours that are dedicated by the administrator to the ASO program oversight, going out to the schools, meeting with the, meeting with the principals, meeting with administration, meeting with those ASOs, those are all hours that are going to be billed to the Board of Education and reimbursed by the Board of Education.
Thank you. I got a question. So Mary, what is the, what is the constabulary's task in pistol permits? Isn't that just a clerical push-through and that directly goes to the state? So it's a matter of gathering information and sending it to the state?
So actually...
They don't approve or anything?
No, there is a suitability requirement. So there is a review on a suitability requirement under the statute to review whether or not there's other factors that may, or, and also, they also review the actual backgrounds that come back. Sometimes we have backgrounds that have, that come back that are rather complex, and our officers review those to determine whether or not an offense is an immediate disqualification. So they... Um, so they review all of the, all of our pistol permits. They review to determine whether or not there's, uh, and I don't, we haven't really, we, I don't know that we've had anybody with a denial for suitability. It's generally background. And the background is that, you know, sometimes it's somebody will think that they've had something expunged from their record and, and it never got expunged and it's on the record. So they will contact the individual, walk through what that disqualification is. Many times they give them, um, uh, you know, guidance as to what they might be able to do to rectify that, to be able to continue to pursue for a pistol permit and how they might, uh, you know, achieve that. Um, or if it is a straight-out denial because it is an automatic disqualifier, um, they will review that with the, with the, with the individual as well. So then they, uh, process that and send it to our office. So there is, um, there is some time dedication on the review of pistol permits.
Okay, but as, there's no decisions made whether or not to give that permit?
Correct. My, it is my decision as to whether or not the permit is issued. I'm the one that actually technically issues the temporary permit.
But you don't, you don't have any decision?
Yes, I do.
You, so you're, so you're saying right now, you can deny a pistol permit?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I can deny a pistol permit. And there are times that we have denied a pistol permit at the town level because of a disqualifying, uh, background check. Um, something came back in the background that becomes an automatic disqualifier. That is the process with a pistol permit. The towns have to-
But that's not your personal decision? You're, you're ma, you're making it based on, based on a background check? But you're not basing, you're not basing it on that's, that individual?
Correct. I'm basing, I'm basing it on the requirements of the qualifications based on their, on their background. And I have our law enforcement review that to, sometimes we've had backgrounds come back that are murky. Like they, they report one thing and another thing and it's unclear within the background check as to whether or not, do they even have the right person? Um, some names can be very similar. And I wanna, before we disqualify an individual, I want to be sure, and I don't have access to that record background, our law enforcement does. So they do that final review of that background before we make that, um, determination based on that background. But yes, if the town, if I, as the town, um, dis, uh, deny a pistol permit, an individual does have the ability to appeal that, um, at the state level. Our officers attend those, those appeals on behalf of the town to articulate to the, um, Appeals Board why that denial was, um, why that denial was in place.
Okay, so it's only, not to, not to be redundant, but, so it's only denied, a person is only denied based on their background?
So by law, there are two avenues that could arise a potential denial. One is individuals' background and the other one is suitability. So suitability is very discretionary and I will say that we haven't really, I don't know that we've had anybody based on suitability. But suitability may be something that it didn't pop through their background. They do, they do a, a secondary background check through, um, through another profile to determine if somebody has had recent, um, mental health committals and things like that, that would also be a disqualifying factor. Um, and that, so by law, there are actually two. I don't wanna mislead you by saying it's only by background. There are two, any town can do this. There are two ways of denial. One is by background and the other one by statute is suitability.
Now suitability is defined by the information received from the background? It's not personal opinion?
Well, I, I would say that that's how I treat it. I don't know that that's how every town treats it. Suitability is very vague within the statute. I, I treat it as based on the, on the background. I don't know that every town does that.
That would have to be, right?
I, I, again, a person, if they feel that they have been unfairly denied, they then go to, um, the, the appeals. Um, and they can appeal that decision at the state level and the state handles all the appeals. We don't handle the appeals locally. Those are all handled, um, by the, um, Firearms Appeals Board.
Okay, 'cause Rhode Island went through, went through that whole situation where they, you know, 'cause the police chief would have, as the town manager, have their own personal preference if they wanted to deny somebody or not. And that's, that's against our constitutional rights.
Yeah, again, I base it all on background.
Jason?
Thank you.
I, I will say that I know who the administrator that's running right now, that we have onboard. He is also local. He knows where the hotspots are. He knows where, he knows the troublemakers. He, he's a local. He's worked with youth throughout, throughout the years, so he's, he's definitely plugged in and, um, I know he knows a lot.
Thank you. The reason why I was asking was I, I didn't realize that the cleric, the current year's clerical line included, um, the police administrator, whereas the, the summary at the heading of that page just said that, um, it included a police administrator. And, uh, I, I saw the increase of sixty-one thousand over the previous year without realizing that some of that money was already in this year's current budget under clerical.
Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate my colleague Tammy's point about, uh, the call volume and that that's large, that was heard and understood. I appreciate that. Um, I had a question about the highway, I think it was highway maintenance position, Mary. And you said if it was canceled, then you would have to sub out, uh, some of the other projects. Could we then transfer some of those to capital projects then if they were subbed out?
No, um, only if it's part of a capital project and that would we, we typically, if it, so capital projects, um, if it is part of a capital project, it's not housed within the operational budget. This would be, um, we have throughout the year, periodic times that we have to repair storm drainage. That's not part of a larger capital project. So we wouldn't charge capital projects for that. That's maintenance. And so that's within this operating budget. So if we're doing maintenance on a storm drainage, then that contractual service would be charged to the operating budget. Um, it wouldn't go to a capital budget because it's not part of an overall capital project, right? So we have to repair a storm drain, right? It's one drain, um, and so we have to go through that, so that gets charged to here.
You would have to upgrade it, actually upgrade it, not just repair, so, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, so there's, uh, mm-hmm.
Oh, I lost her.
Under this, uh, first scenario that you have, which is the least impact to the budget with a zero-point-eight-eight, uh, mill increase. You know, you'd mentioned that the salt and calcium, we could go upwards to fifty thousand. What would that be if we, say we, we went with this scenario, but we went to fifty thousand? Would it, is it, I don't think it's a dramatic change, but I'm just curious.
So if you went the additional fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand is a, a further reduction of point zero-two.
Okay.
So for each twenty-five thousand, you would get point zero-two. So it would go from point eight-eight to point eight-six. If you went to the seventy-five, it would be, uh, point eight-four.
Okay, thank you.
So I won't go off on, can I, anybody?
Go ahead, Patty.
Okay, so I won't go off on a tangent again. Um, when I was talking about the constabulary, I'm sitting here in my basement and it clicked in my head when we're talking about public safety. It was probably about nine years ago, ten o'clock in the morning. I was in this house by myself. My husband was in upstate New York because he was a long-haul trucker and I had to call nine-one-one because there was somebody trying to break in my house. And I will tell you, it felt like forever before a police officer got here. I couldn't even tell you in real time what happened. My father ended up here, the police were here, my neighbor was here. But the point is, a woman alone in her home with a local police department and, and thankfully at the time, it was nine years ago, with Troop D right down the road, um, I was very fortunate to have them available to come to me. The guy had taken off by the time they got here, but the next day, he was on video in Thompson trying to break into a couple other houses. So that could have been my house. And I was here alone with a dog. Um, and I do thank the Lord he didn't get in. But the point is, I was thankful those police were there. And I think anyone else who understands a small town, things can happen that you don't expect. You want police officers who know the area, know the community and are seasoned veterans, um, available. So my, so from there, I'll segue in. Um, highway department mechanic, Mary, you said we have two?
Yes, we currently have two filled positions. The third position is currently vacant. It's been vacant since January. We've been recruiting, but right now I've paused that recruitment.
Okay, um, how many vehicles do we have? Pieces of equipment that those two gentlemen work on?
You're really testing my memory. So I did this a number of years ago when we were actually-
I am, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay, when we brought on-
I'm trying to make a point.
So I wanna say that we have around, um, between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty, um, between police cars, town pool vehicles, uh, highway department vehicles, equipment, parks, parks equipment, um, and vehicles, I wanna say. Oh, and, and our WPCA's, uh, equipment as well, which are also maintained. So I wanna say we're probably right around the hundred and, probably around a hundred and twenty and I'm sure if Matt's watching, he'll correct me in the morning. But I, I wanna say that's about where we're at.
Okay, so of all those, um, we, out of, just an estimated number, how many of those pieces of equipment require preventive maintenance and regular updates?
All of them.
That a certified mechanic would need?
All of them.
And only two mechanics are covering over a hundred pieces of equipment?
Correct.
And we're talking dump trucks?
Dump trucks, yeah, loaders, pickup trucks, uh, pool vehicles, our, um, our mowers, um, our vac machines, our grapple trucks, all, all of the equipment, loaders, everything.
Well, I will say, I was a shop coordinator for a truck fleet of over three hundred tractors and eighteen hundred trailers. We had forty-three mechanics and probably had, hmm, I don't know, maybe fifty trucks at one location and I had ten mechanics. So bravo to your team. I'm even more impressed right now. I did not realize there were only two mechanics.
So we've been operating for the last number of years, I wanna say the last six years at least, with three mechanics. Our third mechanic just recently left in Jan, in the end of December, so we've been recruiting. Um, so that, it's, it's vacant, but we haven't been without a third mechanic for quite some time. But going forward, that's why I say going forward, if this third position were cut and, um, we don't fill that vacant position, then, um, I could foresee that we're going to need to outsource some of those repairs because there's just, um, not the capability for two individuals to manage all of those, uh, regular maintenances.
So, so with all of those mechanic, um, sorry, with all those preventive maintenance and the updates and oil changes and all that, um, there were three and from January to now, there's been a short, we're short one mechanic?
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, we need to fill that ASAP. And I'm assuming those mechanics, since it's heavy equipment and dump trucks and stuff, they have special certifications, correct? They're not gonna go just find one at Jiffy Lube?
Correct. We do require them to have background in, um, heavy equipment maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Patty, well, I just wanna, uh, add one little piece to that and I know you were talking about your truck fleet. Um, being in the, in the repair industry myself and I do everything from vehicles to backhoes, tree truck, bucket trucks, um, everything, I, it's, it's not necessarily how many vehicles are in a fleet. It's A, how well they've been maintained previously, um, age of the vehicles. There's so many things to factor in, because if you're only doing preventive maintenance and your, and your fleet's relatively newer, um, you can get away with, with a fewer amount of mechanics. Whereas if you're dealing with an older fleet that needs more work, um, that operators aren't as gentle on the equipment, um, then you're definitely gonna need more mechanics. Um, so I mean, a, as far as the amount of vehicles, if I told you the amount of vehicles I worked on in a year, your head would probably spin and wonder how I could possibly do it.
You're speaking to the choir. So I am from a fourth-generation trucking family. I was a shop coordinator for years and I sold heavy equipment. So I know what you're saying. I was just making a very basic point. The preventive maintenance alone, when you're looking at DOT requirements, you have to be on schedule. You can't let those trucks on the road if PM is expired. I had no idea we only had two mechanics right now. I would have expected about five in a garage that size. So bravo to you, Mary.
Really bravo to the guys. They're the ones that work their butts off out there.
How many?
Absolutely.
How many mechanics does the Board of Ed have for their side of the fleet?
I think they only have two, one or two. I think they have two.
And they're operating out of the same building?
They are.
Okay. Comments from anyone?
Um, I was gonna say here and, uh, I don't know if I wanna say recommend, but with the budget, the scenario, when we increased the calcium to fifty thousand and that would reduce the mill rate increase to point eight-six, we're not losing any, uh, mechanic's positions. We would still be that, uh, looking to fill that position. And I think the other, the other one at the point five is, uh, with eliminating all those, the senior programs and the library hours and all that, I think that's, uh, I, I think that's extreme. I don't think I would be in favor of that. This, this one here, we're gonna have to, we can't continue to go on. At, at some point, we're gonna come to the cliff where we're gonna jump, the mill rate's gonna jump a lot at once. Um, so I don't know if I wanna make a recommendation, see where the, the, uh, appeal is of this one here at point eight-six with fifty thousand from the SOL, what the other members may feel. This, it would cut the BOED one-point-three million, but it'll still cover the ASO, um, that they, they're looking for. Uh, 'cause I would wanna fund the ASO program in the schools.
One thing I just wanna clarify is, um, while we have control over how much goes to annual town meeting on the BOE side, we don't have any control over how they spend that money.
Correct.
To go, to go with Kevin, what if we went with seventy-five in the SALT? Um, I don't know where everybody feels about the ambulance service. Um, you know what we have for NDDH? We know twenty-five for, off of the contingency, can handle that. Um, Board of Ed, cut him one-point-five. Because honest with you, from, from what Patty's seen, what Michelle's seen, Oo's seen, I've seen, and I'm sure the rest of you have looked through it, there is way too much. I mean, we, we bring our own drinks, we bring our own snacks if we're at a meeting. There's no reason why taxpayers should be paying for their, the food for their meetings. There really shouldn't be. Because they're getting paid and the redundancy with the travel costs. These people are already on the clock. We're already paying their salaries to go wherever they're going. So I don't understand how you could spend over a hundred thousand dollars to transport athletes when you already got another line item paying for bus drivers and the town's already paying for your buses. The gas comes from the town, so you already got a break on that. So, I mean, there's, I, I hate to do it and it's, honestly, it's better than what happened last year when we gave them a dollar. So two hundred thousand is way better than a dollar.
And, and one thing I just wanna add to is, because this has been rattling around in my head as we talk about the BOE. Um, if you consider what their ask was last year, I believe they were asking for eight-hundred-eighty-thousand-dollar increase last year. Um, had they gotten an eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar increase, what would the surplus they'd be turning back right now look like? So I mean, it, it's, the, the fact that they were able to get by with, um, with a dollar and not completely have to deplete the non-lapsing account, which, which I give them credit for. I mean, it's just because they're turning back a surplus, um, as opposed to another town that doesn't turn back a surplus, doesn't mean our Board of Ed isn't fiscally responsible because I can speak to a situation that- um, as opposed to another town that doesn't turn back a surplus, doesn't mean our Board of Ed isn't fiscally responsible, because I can speak to a situation that, um, th- there was a Board of Ed, there was a s- a school system where, towards the end of the year, they were just spending any penny they had left, so they didn't have to turn it back. They went and filled a storage container full of paper, a non-climate-controlled storage container full of paper. The paper went to waste from the humidity. So, I would much rather see our Board of Ed turn back a surplus at the end of the year than try and spend every single penny because they're worried they won't get anything the following year. Um, but, that being said, I, they, they did, definitely did demonstrate that they could get by on, without that eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars and not have to completely depre-, uh, deplete the non-lapsing account. Um, I know a lot of their surplus is due to positions that haven't been filled, um, and I don't, personally, I don't see them having the ability to fill those positions, and, and we see it on the town side with the mechanics position. Um, I, I see it in an industry I'm in. Um, other industries, I see it as well. And so, it's a matter of, they were able to do it and still turn back a surplus. Um, can they do that again? I don't know if they could. Um, I, myself personally, I do support them bringing on ASOs. I, I one-hundred percent do, because I firmly believe the safety of our students is the, of, of the utmost importance, um, as well as the safety of our residents when, when we're talking about the constabulary as well. I would be in, I would be in favor of, um, as Ms. Wakefield talked about, the seventy-five doll-, the seventy-five-thousand-dollar cut, um, from the SALT line, which I believe if we did that with the-
So, I just ran that scenario really quickly.
Yep.
What, um, Ms. Wakefield just proposed, the seventy-five thousand out of, out of SALT, hundred-and-twenty thousand out of the ambulance service, the thirteen out of NDDH, twenty-five that, twenty-five thousand out of contingency, and one-point-five from the Board of Education. That brings the mill rate increase to a point-seven-zero.
What is it, Mary?
Point-zero.
So, it would be a seven-point-zero mil inc-, a point, I'm sorry, a point-seven, sorry. It's late. A point-seven-zero mil increase. For the BOE budget, I have a reduction of one-point-five million. So, that would-
They get two-seventy-five.
About two-seventy-five would be their increase. Two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand would be their increase. Four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand is what they reflected in their decision package.
And that's eliminating KB's request?
It's not all of it's eliminated. It's removing a hundred-and-twenty thousand of that hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar request, so it does, um, provide some increase to that KB ambulance request.
Right. And I will say too, that first off, that's twenty-five thousand additional to KB, because those are for getting rid of the entire request, obviously. Um, I definitely understand probably more than most there, um, the, the need. Uh, personally, I, you know, I've mentioned to some other council members, I, I would love to see us go up a little further with the, the ambulance, but I, I will leave that to, I've, I've told you where I felt, feel about it, but that's up to you guys. But, um, with the, um, Board of Ed, the one thing I want to point out is, the Town Council has no control of the line items. Um, even at the annual town meeting, the, the townsfolk do not have control over the line items for the Board of Education, but the Board of Ed does have control over their own line items. So, they, you know, I, I know we have expressed, um, uh, support for the ASOs, um, and I know, I've been talking with Ms. George as well, the actual, uh, market analysis of our teachers right now. I, I personally am in support of their salary increases as well, uh, because that would help to bring them up to a, a, not top tier, but I think, if I believe, remember correctly, at least the, the median, um, for the market currently. So, I would be supportive of that. But again, going back to the fact that we are looking at budget surpluses every year, which I don't want to, like, you know, the chairman's already said, I don't want to, um, see somebody not have a budget surplus because, and punish them for a budget surplus, um, because we don't want them coming back to us halfway through the year saying, hey, we kind of spent everything. Uh, we need some more. So, we don't want that either. Uh, but at the same point, we have to obviously balance that. So, I think I agree with Tammy, the one-point-five is, is more than, should be enough along with the two million and
And they're non-lapsing.
Non-lapsing as well.
Do you know what the current balance is in the non-lapsing account?
Was it one-point-seven?
It's about one-point-seven-five million.
Okay.
All right, one-point-seven-five million.
So, they've only used roughly a quarter of a million.
Right, and so the amount that they had, um, determined, the two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand that they were, um, going to potentially utilize if needed for the current year budget, they're not going to have to utilize. So, they're still, they're turning back, um, you know, I think they were estimating a little over a million on turnback this year. So, they're not going to be utilizing the two-hundred-and-fifty for that. So, they're, they, they have dedicated funds out of the non-lapsing over the current year. So, their, their projection is one-point-seven. For the end of this year. And then, um, so there'll be room for them to make the request to, um, put, to replenish that account.
And they, they haven't, you haven't actually gotten their actual money back from the previous?
So, that action hasn't taken yet because the audit hasn't been completed.
Okay.
So, we would be, I believe, looking to put that on the council's agenda for May. Um, I believe that we'll have draft audit by then, so the council will then have audited numbers to consider um, in the ask. So, they have submitted the ask, but that action hasn't come before you because that comes before you at the time of a draft audit. So, we have audited numbers, and we know that there's not going to be any additional adjustments to that fund as you're making that decision.
So, approximately, they're turning back how much?
From last year?
Three-point-
Three-point-six million dollars.
Yeah, three-point-six million is what their turnback is from last year.
But that doesn't include, they request their non-lapsing, oh, sorry.
That, they would request their non-lapsing off of that. That's, that's the total total, um, not net of what their non-lapsing request was.
So, they're going to turn back approximately three-point-six million, so to turn them back up to the two million, they're going to need an extra four, so they're turning back over three million?
No, the one-point-seven figure that we just gave you would assume that they-
Last year.
Yeah, against their, la- last year-
Non-lapsing, how much did they get over in the non-lapsing for last year?
Seven-hundred-and-forty-six thousand.
So, it'll be just a little under three million dollars that will be increasing fund balance from last year for their turnbacks, if the, uh, request that they have put forward for, uh, replenishing non-lapsing is approved by the Town Council for last fiscal year.
So, Mary, the three-point-six million, that's money that has already been in a budget, and the taxpayers have already paid for, correct? Or am I wrong?
Correct. That's last fiscal year's budget. That's how much was, remained unspent.
And how much of, how much does that equal in a mil? How many mils?
So, one-point-three million is a mil. So, it's about two and a half mils.
And that's coming back, that's what they have not spent of their budget from last year?
Correct, from last fiscal year.
Okay.
But does that include the non-lapsing account? Because I kind of lost you.
No, that's separate. Non-lapsing is separate from this. So, they are return, they, so, to break it down again, they're, um, they're returning unspent from the prior fiscal year, three-point-six million. Of that three-point-six million, they have a request to replenish their non-lapsing back to the two-million mark
Okay.
of about seven-hundred thousand. So, the total increase to the fund balance is going to be just under three million, about two-point-nine, two-point-eight, two-point-nine million. They will then, they will then have the full two million, which we have projected in that number of balance of one-point-seven million for the current year. Um, they will have a two, they'll have their two million in their non-lapsing account. So, they still have the full two million from their non-lapsing at the end of last fiscal year. Make sense?
I got two questions, probably not budgetary, but budgetary. Um, so I'm a hundred percent for the ASO. I think they're a great idea. Um, my first question is, um, so the renovations to the, to KMS, have we, our entry points, have that, has that been addressed as to vulnerability? As, because if they're tempered glass, we've all, we've all seen it a million times. If somebody wants to get in, they're going to get in with the tempered glass. Did we take any precautions to protect against that?
Yeah, so the building, the, uh, Bill, the Permanent Building Commission evaluated that throughout the process. Um, they maintained consistence, consistent, um, application of what they have done for all of the windows. We did the window project at KMS and the entry door, uh, project prior to this project with KMS, and they did do impact resistance. They did do bulletproof because of cost factors. Bulletproof was substantially more, and it was not within the budget. So, they opted to go for impact resistance. It does, uh, delay, but it will still have a penetration. Um, but they have been, that has been an active conversation in the Permanent Building Commission throughout the KMS project. Um, and I'm sure it will continue through even the Westfield Avenue project. But, um, we have talked about, um, entry points within the Westfield Avenue project as well. So, yes, they have, um, had lengthy conversations around entry points, windows, and interior, uh, materials for interior, um, walls.
So, it's just a, a thinner film, I would assume, right?
Correct, yeah. It does, they've, you know, we've seen, uh, you know, videos and demonstrations of, you know, what does that mean, um, on that impact resistance to glazing, um, over it. Um, and there is penetration. It takes, uh, substantially more effort than just, um, a regular window in order for a, um, access to be gained. Th- there's a lot more shots that have to happen, and the more shots that happen on the exterior-
It's time.
It's time, right? It's all time, and it's response, right?
It gives you time to get somebody that's armed.
Exactly. So, that was the thought process around that, was it would, it would delay any potential entry, but it wouldn't necessarily fully prohibit an entry. Um, and they felt that that was the best bound, that was, that was the balance that could be achieved, to be able to provide that added security, um, in the budget constraints that they were in.
Is there any thoughts for the rest of the schools to move forward with that?
Yeah, we did, um, entry doors for, uh, KMS. KCS, I don't think we did Kiss. Um, those were all done as impact resistance. Um, I believe the capital improvement plan for the Board of Education includes an outer-year, um, door, entry doors for, uh, KIS. Um, and I'm sure that the Permanent Building Commission, when that project is eventually um, assigned to them, that they would pursue, um, similar i- impact resistance for the other ones. So, as they go through and have those projects come up, that is definitely a high focal point for the Permanent Building Commission.
Thanks.
To, to get to point-five, what would it take, how much more would we have to cut to get to point-five?
To get to point-five?
Over the point-seven.
So, recognize that the, so the scenario two gets you a point-five-three.
Yeah, but at the same time, we're hurting the kids, and we're hurting the elderly.
Right. So, I'm just saying, for, for perspective,
Oh, I know.
The half, the one-point-five-million-dollar Board of Education cut is on that scenario two.
Okay.
As well as, you know, the only addition to that number, from what I'm seeing, from what you've discussed, is adding additional, um, twenty-five thousand dollars to the SALT reduction, and that would get you to a point-five-one mil increase.
Okay.
So, you know, that's your reference point.
We, we got, so basically, we would have to come up with another hundred, almost hundred thousand to get to point-five. Because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of cutting anything that's going to take away programming for our, our town. I think we, we've been recognized with our Parks and Rec Department multiple times, and our library staff. I mean, Mrs., Ms. Fedora came to our last meeting, and she spoke very much about the library, and the library is utilized. It's utilized year-round.
Right. So, in order to bring this, the number, your, your ask was how many, how much more, it would be closer to about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand would be additional cuts required on the town's side to bring it to a point-five.
Now, I, I have one question. Um, talking about this three-million dollars that will be getting turned back from the Board of Ed from their surplus, in this budget packet that you presented, where it's got the proposed, uh, fund balance for twenty-three, twenty-four, is any of their surplus that would be coming back reflected in that amount?
Yes. We've accounted for that within the account, which is really why the proposal to maintain the, um, uh, the road program that you initiated last year, you can continue to fund that. Again, you know, long-term, there's going to, you know, eventually, we're going to need to make decisions around that versus utilizing fund balance, depending on how much continues to be returned overall, um, year over year. But that gave you the, the opportunity, which was what had been discussed in the previous year, because we had, during the budgetary process in the previous year, we had an indication that there was going to be a substantial turnback again from that year, and so it was utilized.
I will say, we've already done Connecticut Mills. Looks great. They just finished paving it. They haven't done the curving yet, but they stripped it down, and it's already repaved, so we're up and-
I heard complaints about the trees that got cut down over there.
I, I got a question. So, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
I maybe misunderstood you, but I'd like to hear more about your KB, because I believe that, I just make one statement. I believe that we could, this, this could backfire on us just because of the comment that that gentleman made that evening where he say, it, because I asked him, I says, well, what happens if we just say no? And he said, well, you're going to have to deal with the service that you're going to get. So, that kind of leaves them open to, you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think I, I, and correct me if I'm not understanding you fully. Yeah, I think, um, I can't speak for KB Ambulance. I don't work for them. I don't, uh, you know, I, I work in EMS, but I don't work for them. Um, I will say that I recently had a conversation with Chief Varga. Him and I sat down, had, had a little bit more of a talk, and he's in, in the understanding, um, kind of where, uh, I know I personally am about things, because I, I'm not, uh, for the full one-forty-five, but I am for getting them up to one-fifty personally, um, which is a forty-thousand-dollar increase, uh, over last year's budget. But, um, their operations, it depends on what they see fit to do. If they choose to reduce their operations, that is one-hundred percent on them. Uh, the town's liability, the town's, the town is only required to have an ambulance service that provides service to the town. Uh, that's, that's where we really stand. Uh, what KB does beyond that is beyond the town's control. So, does that, does that answer you a little bit?
Yeah, my first, my first question was when you, you said you had a different view on the KB Ambulance. I wasn't sure if you were going up, you were going down, so you want to go up.
Right, just a little bit.
Right. And, and I just, I just see that could be an issue, because if something happens, automatically, they're going to say, hey, we told you we needed the money.
Correct. And again, the, what they do is well beyond any of our control.
Yeah.
You know, we, we can't control what they do. Same thing for our fire departments, you know, there's tax, each, each fire department has their own tax district. Um, and what they do is well beyond the control. The taxpayers in those districts make the decision to, agree to, we're going to pay this much in taxes, and what those departments do is well beyond our control. So, generally speaking, I will say that, um, in some of my conversations, it seems like they're going to try to maintain what they're doing currently. Um, but I can't speak for what they're going to do, to be, to be a hundred percent honest.
Right, right. Kind of like the Board of Education, but we can't-
Correct, yeah, exactly. Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Andy, I, I can, like Ray, I've known quite a few of the EMS and the EMTs and EMRs and, and medics that are in this area. I don't think they have the same opinion that the board members from KB had expressed that night, because I know most, most of the EMTs, EMRs, paramedics I know, when the alarm goes off, they respond. And they, and they, they, my daughter is one of them, and she, some nights, she, it's non-stop. And she drops, goes back out, picks up another, and goes back. You know, making eight and ten trips to the hospital in a, in a, in a shift is not unusual.
And, and for, they are obligated, so the state of Connecticut sets a regulation of, you're obligated for fifty, fifty-one percent. I always forget where we fall on that one percent. About fifty, fifty-one percent of your first group calls that have to be responded to. KB Ambulance has responded to a hundred percent of their first group calls in probably over the last twenty-three years at least. You know, even being, when they were fully volunteer, a very small mix of paid volunteer, they were doing phenomenal work even then. I know, because I was thirteen years old when I needed their service once. The one and only time I ever needed an ambulance, and they showed up in the middle of the night. So,
That's good.
You know, that's, uh, a testament to them and, uh, what they have been able to do, but I, I can, again, I can't- I, again, I can't speak for what they're going to do moving forward.
So just to kind of give you the context of impact on that, if we were to change the number from $120,000 cut to $105,000 cut, which is that additional 40,000 added to their budget, and keeping the same scenario that Tammy had proposed, that the $75,000 salt cut and the 1.5 BOE, instead of it being a .70 mil rate increase, it becomes a .71. So it adds .01 for that additional 15,000.
So, just, I handed out the resolution that was before you, the, I know you did a first and a second, but that didn't have numbers written in it. So, the, in order for this resolution to be truly voted on, you would have to determine what those, we'd have to fill in the blanks for those, for those numbers.
So this most recent scenario we discussed, which brings, yep, so that would be a $75,000 cut on the salt and calcium. Let's make sure I'm on the right...
So it would be a $75,000 cut on salt...
Yep.
A $105,000 cut to the ambulance service, $13,306,000 cut to the NDDH line, $25,000 cut to the contingency line on the town side, and $1.5 million cut to the Board of Education. Do you want the town, what the, each of those town, each of those totals would be for general government and the Board of Education? I can recite them out, but I didn't want to do that without...
Yeah, it'd be good.
Okay, so for the town number...
Hold on, let's see.
We're grabbing that very quickly?
218. 218. 306. 306. 25. 25. 25-511-811.
So to just confirm, 25-511-811?
How would you say, actually, hold on a second. 306. Sorry. It's 25-511-808. 808. Sorry.
808. So that would be the town's budget, and then the Board of Education?
That's 1.5. That's easy.
And yes, I do have her do this in the actual budget document, because one year, I did it in a different spreadsheet, and I messed up the Board of Education, and it totally haunted me for three years. So we redo it in here to confirm all the numbers.
So it's 45,305,000.
Forty-five million.
Sorry. Forty-five million, 305,118 dollars. Eighteen? Yes. Forty-five, 305,118.
Thank you.
And the total?
Oops. Seventy million, 816,926.
So if you were to follow through, if you were to move forward with that scenario, those would be your three numbers within the resolution for blanks.
Now, I know you had given scenarios before on what that kind of mil rate would look like, depending on what a house is worth. Let's go with roughly a $250,000 house. What does a .71 mil increase look like? And that's a praise value, not assessed value?
I'm just verifying to make sure I calculated right. It's been a long day.
Yeah, I hear you.
So the annual increase would be $124.25.
On a $250,000?
Correct. On a $250,000 property value with an assessed value, that would bring an assessed value at $175,000. And so that would result in an annual tax increase of $124.25, or a monthly of $10.35.
Well, I will run around the room on this one before we make a motion to actually input numbers in here. The numbers that we're at, Mr. Whitehead, would you feel comfortable with those?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
I'm being a mission exception.
Okay. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kertull?
Yes.
I'd really like to make the BOEs...
Yeah.
I'd really like to make the BOEs a dollar for that. For how much they're returning. Oh, my gosh. So...
I mean, I understand why you only want a dollar, because honest with you, if they're turning back 3.6, and they want another 1.7 on top of what they had already asked for last year, yeah, I understand why you want to give them a buck, but at the same time, they got expenses. I get that. Some of the stuff they've cut, maybe they'll actually put stuff back that'll benefit the students.
They haven't cut in the right places.
I know, they, I know. They haven't cut, and we have no say over that. But you know what? That's where the parents and the residents in town have to hold them accountable. And, you know, our job is, let's just, we'll put the spotlight on them, and maybe they don't like the, don't like the bright lights, well, maybe you should do something about that. But I don't, I've said it before, you can't keep throwing a town, and no money doesn't make kids smarter, but you can't keep going at a zero, because eventually, you're going to fall behind.
Yeah.
So...
Not at this rate, they won't fall behind.
Oh, I know. You've got a $2 million town mass, and so...
So, Ula, was that a yay or nay? Patty, are you with us?
I am.
How do you feel where we're at right now?
I think this is one of the toughest part of our jobs.
I agree.
And I agree with Tammy. Putting a spotlight on the issues is also our job, and hopefully will be effective, finally. The amount of money that, and I, and I keep saying it, and it's not on one person, it's an issue through multiple administrations in the school district. There's a lot of waste or mismanagement. I don't know what it is, but something's got to be done about it. When you have 2.5 of a mil, taxpayers are already paid down, that's getting put back in the general fund, that's a major problem. And the fact that we now, in order to sustain our employees and our current conditions for the town, which is affected by the schools, obviously, it's very concerning. And of course, no, I don't want to support any increase, but in the economy we're in, we, you know, .71 of a mil is a much better scenario than we could be facing. If we had someone different than Mary and her entire team steering the ship. So unfortunately, I, yeah, I guess I have to say yes, and I'm very disappointed that the BOE wasn't here tonight.
Yeah. Since I got elected, I've always pushed for trying to keep taxes flat every single year, trying to find ways to cut. And I know you can only do that for so long due to whether it's inflation, or you're looking at contractual wage increases for the unions, and, and non-union wages as well, because you want to be able to retain your staff. So the cost of everything goes up, and as much as I would love to, I'd love to see a zero mil increase year after year after year. I know this year especially, the fact that we're looking at roughly $400,000 increase in debt services to go towards a project that, the project got kicked down the road for way too many years. And that's one thing that, when I came onto the council, I realized how many things in town, previous councils have pushed off and pushed off, and especially now considering the fact with inflation over these past 20, 25 years, let alone recently, if these projects had gotten done 10, 15 years ago rather than waiting till now, how much of a cost savings would that have been to the taxpayers? Instead of now we're looking at $30 million project, where it might have only been $12 million if it had gotten done 10 years ago. So I mean, it's, unfortunately, it gets to a point where the foot's got to hit the road, where you, you got to get going with something. You got to start moving things forward, and KMS was a prime example. I was thankful for when our town manager brought us for a tour of the town buildings, so we could, as council members, we could actually see the conditions these buildings were in. Seeing a bathroom in a, inside of a classroom that they couldn't use because of the decay of the floor was completely unacceptable to me. I mean, that was, and I don't know how many people in town are aware how bad the conditions were at KMS, or the conditions of the community center. I mean, these are buildings that very minimal maintenance have been done for years just to keep them going, and none of the projects that, I shouldn't say none of the projects, a lot of the projects that should have been addressed were put off. And I understand that trying to keep Killenly affordable for our businesses, for our residents, is extremely critical, but at the same time, having infrastructure that isn't falling apart is critical as well. And I, as much as I struggle with a .71 mil increase, considering the inflationary environment we're in right now, as much as I hate to say I'd support it, I would support the .71. Michelle, I don't know if you want to add anything, or...
I mean, the only way I feel is that I would like time, one more time, for us to get together and look through it again and make sure that we're not missing anything. I mean, I still look at number two. I know, it seems like people are committed to not cutting anything. I might say, there's 26 temporary recreational of those high school students, like during the season...
It's Camp Wallaby.
Yeah, yeah. So I might say, how do people feel about that? Like, I personally would, wouldn't mind looking at it one more time to make sure. Everybody might just say, "No, absolutely not," and that's cool. I just feel like that's all I think about. That's why I said abstain.
Okay. I can appreciate that. The other thing too is, there's, as much as I hate to extend a meeting, or basically have another meeting, I, as much as I want to get through this, at the same time, the one thing I think about is, if we table this and come back tomorrow, there's a possibility that Mr. Grandowski might be able to be here, and we could hear some input from him as well, because I would like to include him as well. I know it's unfortunate. He had something that came up where he couldn't be here this evening.
I mean, there's always the annual town meeting.
That's right.
True.
So we get, if we put these numbers out there, then people get talking, and maybe they'll, maybe they'll get a hold of the Board of Ed budget and start making noise.
Yeah. That would also address any concerns too that you have. I was going to bring that up, but thank you, Tammy, that, you know, for the annual town meeting, this isn't, this isn't the overall final end-all-be-all. So we just still have the annual town meeting where not only us collectively can look, continue to look at this, it's the town themselves, and they have the, and I'm very grateful that we have the right and the ability to come forward, and they can make changes to any of our line items, as well as discuss a lot of the other issues that are going on, so...
The, the taxpayers don't have the extended budget that we have from the BOE. They don't know what the other objects are, so they're missing all of that information.
You don't know what the other objects are.
Pizza.
It's not just pizza.
Yeah.
And I don't, and I don't think the budget was actually posted till a couple of days ago.
The Board of Ed?
The Board of Ed budget.
Yeah. I had received several comments last week that the Board of Ed budget still wasn't on the BOE's website, which was rather disappointing.
Jen's saying that she did find it on their website, so...
I did find it. It's basically duplicate of the main budget book that everyone got. It's, hang on, I'll pull it up again.
So it's not the one in the line that we got?
No.
Is there any way to post that?
That's up to them.
It's basically the carbon copy of the budget book that was all handed out, but it is there. If you go under District, it'll say '23-'24 Budget. So that is...
That's what I, what Ula just said. Could we ask that they put it up?
I can relay that message to the superintendent, and it's up to the Board of Education as to whether or not they, that they want to post that, the worksheets that they provided. Again, the worksheets that they, they expanded detail that they provided, the Board of, the Town Council in there was, doesn't directly tie to the final budget, because there were some modifications or changes that were made afterwards that aren't reflective within that detail, but they had, the Board of Education Chair and Vice Chair had agreed with the superintendent to provide those to the Town Council. I don't know if, I don't know their opinion as far as posting that on the website. I can pass that message along to the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, the budget that looks like the budget book that everyone already received is Killenly Public Schools. If you go to the business office, there's a section, if you scroll down, that says '23-'24 Budget BOE Approved. So it is there, in that format.
Thank you. I must have been looking in the wrong spot on her website.
I must have as well.
I can tell you, looking at budgets just yesterday alone, various budgets, town budgets, not even BOE budgets, Killenly does a great job of putting it right there on the front page when you log in, or when you go onto that website, whereas the other towns I was looking at, I had to like search and find and call in an archaeologist, things like that, so it's crazy.
Wow. We have money for an archaeologist.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. So at this time...
So I think for Robert rules, you would probably want to ask the most, the person that motioned in second if they want to withdraw, and then fill in your number, blanks, and ask for a new first and second on that.
Oh, I was going to ask for an amendment to the motion, but we could do that too.
You could do that too.
I can amend.
You would need to extend. You're at 9:30. Do you want to extend for a few minutes?
I'll make a motion to extend a few minutes to finish the resolution, the amended resolution. Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kertull, a second by Mr. Wood to extend this meeting. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition. Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so... All right, so, um.
So I can make an amendment to the?
Now, did you, you made the original motion?
Yeah, I, can, can I amend my, I would like to amend my motion to include the numbers as provided to the Town Council for the, do you need me to say them or?
Do you want me to read them off?
Sure.
So the, um, town's general government budget would be in the amount of twenty-five million, five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars be allocated to the general government budget. And forty-five million, three-hundred-and-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars allocated to education for a total combined budget of seventy million, eight-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. And it would finish as, is approved and shall be filed with Town Clerk for submission to the annual town meeting for its adoption.
That's, that's how I wanna make the, that's what I'd like to amend my motion.
I'll second Ms. Wakefield's amendment.
We've got a motion to amend the motion and a second. All's in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Actually, I didn't allow for discussion. Motion carries, so the amendment, um, to the motion passes. So now we're, um, uh, any further discussion on the amended motion?
What is it again?
We put the, we put the numbers in.
Yep.
Point-seven-one increase.
No, I meant, what is the?
Okay, so we, we had an amendment, we had a motion to amend the original motion. That amendment added the numbers, the budgetary numbers into the original motion. So now that we have this amended, the amendment to the motion passed, now I'm asking for any further discussion regarding the motion as it's been amended. Meaning? Any discussion on it now that we've added the numbers?
Okay, the only thing I would like to say is I reiterate that I would prefer to have another conversation with just us. But just so it's noted.
I agree.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All's in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Oh, okay. Uh, motion carries? We'll now move on in the agenda, next item up is adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made by Mr. Wood.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Kertula. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.